Tommy usually does.
Sure. When you're ready.
For both members present and Mr. McCarthy absent, just say that.
Present, Councilman McCarthy absent.
Okay. I have a personnel matter that Mr. Wehrenstein sent the memo, that's one we'll have to discuss.
Uh, yes.
I have a litigation matter which Mr. Jacobowski wants to discuss. We have a contractual matter which Mr. Necrotto will discuss. And we also have two personnel matters regarding two positions that will be coming vacant. I do have one for general session, and each of us got this memo from, or letter from Mr. Carlson. And I want Mr. Barnett here or Ms. Dooley to discuss proposal. Do you have this letter?
No, I don't have this letter.
I guess, the reason I brought this is, he's asking for an answer or some kind of, some information as to what he's requesting. Have you seen the letter?
Yes, I have.
And you, Frank, have seen it?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Okay, when I hand it out to you, is a memo about, which we prepared, it's a draft memo which we prepared about a month ago, with regard to this particular proposal. Now, to update everybody, because this has been a while since we talked about it, what you have before you is a map of Toby Carlson's property. The property is a regularly shaped, as you could see here, and it is, sorry, Russ.
Excuse me, is the property all with the red line here?
That's correct. It's a rather substantial.
And down here also?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, what we have in this property are three different zonings. The front portion, which is nearest old Northport Road, is heavy industry. The back portion behind that is light industry, that is up to here, up to the railroad back here, and...
The railroad is north here?
The north, yes, right along the top.
And what is that zone?
That is own light industry along the top portion in that area there. And this bulbous end of it to the right of your sheet, that is zoned, right now, R-43, one acre zoning. What the, there was a lot of issues with regard to litigation on this particular site and other things, which I won't recap. But basically, what we had agreed to look at was that Toby Carlson came in with a proposal to try to mitigate a lot of the problems on this site by doing indoor processing of waste, yard waste, basically. And I said to the board at that time that not only does it have merit, it's something I would like to pursue, because I think we should do this in the town of Smithtown.
Where would that be on the...
Well, that's one of the issues.
Oh, okay.
Or where would place on the site.
Okay.
We haven't even gotten to that particular point yet. What we decided to do was have two meetings, both of which we completed last December. One meeting with the applicant to get an idea of what they were talking about. And it actually is more fluid in terms of what he is proposing than just a simple concept. What fluid, I mean, is he has an idea where he wants to start, and then he has an idea of what, where he'd like to end up with. And there's a lot of issues that's involved in that. It's not just simply indoor processing of materials. It can be repackaging of shredded materials, it can be composting, it can be, and I'll let Russ discuss this, because he knows better than I do, more processing for type of methane type of processing. Anyways, we concluded a month ago, after a meeting with the town attorney, Russ and myself, and that's what the memo, draft memo is before you, and it's still a draft, by the way, that we looked at all the processes, and the only one that we could address with a degree of certainty, and correct me if I'm wrong, Russ, was the shredding of wood products. In other words, that's the first level of activities that he would, that we think that we could proceed on that particular basis. We're not certain that that's what Toby Carlson wants to do at this particular point. This memo was sent around to both the town attorney and to environment to make sure that we were all in agreement with what that is. Now, during that period of time, this is over the holidays, Russ, and I'll let you address this, Russ, came, found a different issue, which was not discussed at those meetings, relative to...
All right, let me, go ahead.
But before you go, you mentioned composting and shredding. They would be on portions of this property that are zoned for, where it would be allowed, is that correct?
There's nothing, none of this activity is permissible right now. We would need to change our code.
We have to change the code, Donnie.
We would have to change the entire code in order to permit this.
The proposal that Mr. Carlson has brought to us is one whereby we would change the town code to allow the activities that he envisions. He, in discussions with us, has indicated a wide range of possible interest and use for this property. The primary one that he has discussed with us is to create an indoor composting facility. The other things that were mentioned are ancillary to that. He talks about processing wood products without composting them to generate a product. He also talks about somewhere down the line, possibly, building an anaerobic digester to accept waste products for conversion into methane gas. Now, the long and the short of it from my department's perspective is, with regard to the indoor composting, such operations are generally preferable to outdoor composting from an environmental perspective, because being indoors, you can institute engineering controls to deal with the odor potential, dust potential, et cetera. I will be very blunt, what we, in my department, had been contemplating was a recommendation whereby such facilities might be allowed by town board special exception, subject to an environmental management plan being submitted by the applicant, and that plan becoming a binding instrument. The plan that we envisioned would detail the process and engineering controls that the property owner proposed to control dust and odors and protect the nearby residents. I will tell you that, from an engineering perspective, we can design such a facility that it will have a very minimal potential for adverse impacts. However, there is a legal issue, and the legal issue is that such facilities are regulated by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, under Part 360. And the process that we envisioned may give you and the residents a false sense of security, because you may be preempted from regulating or imposing types of conditions and controls on this operation that we believe necessary, because it's DEC's prerogative. Coupled with the amount of controversy that surrounds such facilities throughout Long Island that are regulated and controlled by the DEC, I don't know that I would recommend that you rely on that.
Maybe I missed a point. Why does this come under the auspices of the DEC?
Because of the solid waste processing facility.
It's Part 360 law, okay.
Which means that we may not be able to have our own standards for control and management.
Are there other such plants on Long Island?
Islip has a similar one, but it operates in itself. So, that's the only one that I'm aware of that comes close, Russ may know.
And it has not been free of controversy.
It has not been.
Russ, if the DEC has certain standards, but the town of Smithtown makes an agreement with whoever's creating this, would it be able to be done that way? In other words, it's a side agreement, there, it's in writing, and even though the DEC has lesser standards, that agreement would stand, can you do it that way?
Well, that's, that's kind of what we were envisioning. But I will defer to the town attorney's office on the question of whether or not that's sustainable, if challenged.
Yeah, that's...
The problem that we've had with DEC traditionally has been that the DEC acknowledges that there are local regulations, such as zoning and other permits that are allowed, but they tend to give their permits subject to getting approvals. And as a result, we've run into a lot of conflicts with regard to DEC, because even on this site, they've already given permits for the solid waste processing, even though it's on residential property, and it's not permitted in the town code. So, we're always fighting the, not the DEC, but going backwards on this, because the applicant's always claiming, "I already got my major permits in place", even though the DEC says that their permits are always subject to. And this is, not only do we have problems here, we have problems like on the Nissaw Quag River, where they issue permits for docks, where they're not supposed to issue permits for docks, because they are prohibited by town regulations. And so, the, what Russ is maintaining is that, even though we have local controls, it has not been effective in the past in a lot of these areas, and we lead to a lot of conflicts. And if we go with something this major, that becomes a principal issue.
This facility goes on heavy industrial, HI zoning?
We haven't made the determination yet as to where it would go. We, one of the things is, is that we still have to work out site question, we were, only into the processing end of it, the conceptual end. Now, we have to take a look at the site and discuss where it's best located, and where would be the best impact.
Okay, let's just for the moment assume it goes in heavy industrial.
Okay.
The table of contents in heavy industrial does not speak to this kind of processing.
That's correct.
So, it's either a zone change if he doesn't have HI, and adding this particular usage table of content.
That's correct. That's where we're at. We were coming up with a recommendation as to how we would best do it, and I think that's what Russ was addressing earlier, which was that he was envisioning some sort of a special exception that later would be approved by the town board, and it would be subject to some sort of management plan. That's how we would operate it. But what the concern is, is that if we went that far, maybe we couldn't implement the management plan, because DEC would preempt us, and that's an issue.
The same way, many years ago, we lost our control over sand mining with the DEC.
Yeah. So, where do we go from here? He's demanding, not demanding, I shouldn't say, he's asking for an answer. What, what do we say to him?
Well, at this particular juncture, we have to resolve this particular question. If you were to ask us a question today, would we consider this? Because we have uncertainties, I would have to recommend no. What we would like to do, because I think it is a worthwhile endeavor, is we're going to need more time to explore this, and certainly, the town attorney's going to have to do more research, I don't know, with regard to what we can do with regard to regulating this, before we recommend this to the board.
Your report that you issued thus said you're about 50 percent through. So, you still have halfway to go to determine whether or not this is something we want to look at. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Carlson is going to cooperate through the whole process. He's leaning this way, as opposed to the asphalt plant development on the heavy industry part. He'd rather go this way, if the town, if it's acceptable to the town.
One of the things the board should be aware of is that, we all are aware of this from the review side, Carlson has made it very clear, this is a significant and substantial investment. We're talking about between 30 to 40 million dollars for a plant of this particular size. So, for his point of view, he's anxious with regard to understanding whether he could go in that particular direction, and he has to make understandably a lot of commitments, and we understand that. But from our point of view, even though I recommend this as a planner, you know, from a concept point of view, what the town board is going to want to know for the residents is that we could operate this particular site with a degree of protection for the residents in this particular area, and right now, we don't have those answers. And that's basically where we stand, and we need to research that, how we could get them.
Now, Russ, when we, when we first talked about this, you said, in a very general conversation, this technology existed around the country, different places, and that it was fairly successful.
The technology that we were discussing at that point was Mr. Carlson's end goal, which was the anaerobic digester. Just to recap for a minute, what you do with an anaerobic digester is you put certain types of waste inside of a sealed container, and the bacterial action in the absence of oxygen generates methane, which can be used as a fuel. Not only is it presently successful at a number of locations throughout the country, the number of such facilities that are being built is increasing every year. So, it is a, that's a doable technology. When I met with Mr. Carlson, he explained to me that that was only his possible end goal, to eventually incorporate that kind of an operation into what was his primary goal, which was an indoor building compost operation, where he would build a large building, he would take in primarily vegetative debris, although he's indicated that he would be interested in other waste streams as well. Basically, you, you size reduce it by grinding it, you have to control the dust, et cetera, and then you let it compost with bacteria in the presence of oxygen to make soil-type products. Those facilities are not unheard of either. And by being indoors, the advantage is that you can control the process to a greater degree than you can outdoors. You can regulate the amount of moisture that gets into the product, as opposed to being outdoors and subject to the weather. You can filter the air in an effort to capture the odors before they leave the site. And there are different types of equipment and products that are available to do that. So, from a technical perspective, forgetting at the moment whether or not we could enforce it, from a technical perspective, I can tell you that I could sit with Mr. Carlson's engineers and come up with a plan that would, from a technical-engineering perspective, really minimize the potential for adverse impacts upon homeowners. You're talking about certain types of misting equipment, which pulls the odors down. You're talking about process controls on the building that keeps the building tight, prevent possibility for odors escaping. You talk about capturing the air that's in the building and filtering it before it escapes, et cetera. Issue that we have is not a, an engineering technical one or a waste processing type issue. The issue is whether or not we have the ability to ensure that that's, those agreements are enforceable. Mr. Carlson may agree with us now that, you know, all right, he'll give us a plan that says that he'll have automatic closers on the doors with a photoelectric eye, he'll have misters at certain locations, he'll have negative air, and he'll have filtration, this type of things. What we were envisioning was that that, that would be in a document, it would be enforceable by the town. The problem that we've now identified is that those types of controls are the prerogative of the New York State DEC. And somewhere down the line, despite the present property owner's intentions, some successor may say, "I don't have to live to those standards, the DEC doesn't require them", and get them overturned.
The probability of this being bought out by another user is high. Okay, and that's, you know, it's not that we don't, you know, Toby Carlson is a, is a local resident, but once you make an investment like this, it becomes something, you know, an international company might buy this, just like our incinerator, whatever, and want to operate it. And they may operate under a different policy, and we, and we would want to be able to ensure that we always have that degree of control. Just for the record, the other thing is, is that we're really talking about is some substantial buildings here. The buildings, minimal building size that we're talking about is 100,000 square feet that we're talking about that's going to be placed on this site, so...
But that's not so bad. It's a heavy industrial site.
No, it's, it's not, we're not saying it's a bad, we're saying it's a big thing. This is, it's a big, a large level of development and activity that we're going to be doing.
So, from my, and my glean from this, is this is, quote, "Okay use", but because it comes on the DEC, we will lose control of what goes on there.
It's an okay use with proper controls. I think it is, that's, and it has a large potential, if it's not properly controlled, to become a nuisance. We can answer all your questions if we can control it. And it may, you know, I don't know what the possibility may be, but a management may, plan may be that we have an inspector there daily on a regular basis on the plant. That may be like one of the elements that we're looking at, in terms of how we manage this, so...
So, are we continuing this discussion with Mr. Carlson?
Well, I think where we stand right now is this is a matter for the town attorney to enter in and resolve some of the issues that we think are present with regard to how DEC plays along, and what we can do in regard to that. And once we answer that, then we could go back to the technical aspect.
Say it again, if the town attorney works out whatever, he has to work out.
Well, I'm not saying he could work, has to work it out. He has to answer our question as to what limits we have, and how much, how can we control this?
I can speak to that right now.
Come right up here, please, pull the chair up.
Well, the first thing is that, at this point, this is all theory. I need to see what controls both planning and DEW want to implement.
Okay.
And then I can start researching, there are possibilities. But I, I need to see what we're looking to do to compare it to something.
If there were some restrictions put on by the town, does the applicant have the right to go to DEC and say, "These prohibitions are hurting me, I want to do more or less" or whatever, and then we would be overruled on the conditions?
Well, the problem is that that would likely happen after the facility's there already.
We saw that, I think, in some sand mining issue in Kings Park. We fought that, the DEC is no town, you don't have any right. He dug down to almost groundwater.
And then turned the facility into a land.
Yeah.
Isn't this an important enough thing that we could, in this process, sit down with DEC as an, as it's an ongoing thing, and try to get some reasonable conditions set in place, so that we can work with them and they can work with us?
I would agree that that's a process...
I don't know that it's a negotiable item with the DEC, and we can discuss with DEC what our concerns are, and perhaps the current personnel in DEC could give us an indication of their point of view. But it doesn't necessarily mean, if it's acceptable at this point to those personnel, that that position doesn't change over time. So, I, what I would say, as the environmental director, is that I'm looking to say we have some kind of a management plan submitted by the company, that the company agrees to. Basically, it's their plan, that maybe there's some give and take, and they come up with some very specific promises about how they're going to operate the facility to protect the residents, right down to the types of doors, the types of filtration, et cetera. And that that, I'm looking for that to become a enforceable or binding agreement between the town and the property owner. My concern is just that things change over time. I'm not so much worried that the DEC steps in and says, "No town, you can't do that", I'm more concerned that a successor in interest to the person who proposed that plan comes in, and they say, "Well, we're going to buy this facility, and we don't have to live by that", and we wind up in court with the preemption clause.
That's a theoretical thing, but, I mean, shouldn't you, at this point, be willing to sit down with them to discuss those requirements that you think are necessary to be in there? We can't oper, I don't think we can operate on, it could be 10 years down the road, somebody else comes in and says, "This is what's going to happen". If we have a sound, reasonable plan, it should be able to stand up. After all, the governor could change four years from now, or two years from now, and that could change DEC, for all we know. And all those things are possibilities.
Right, that's the point, because the, there is the legal problem of potential preemption, and the promise today does not mean that, we're, we're being asked by Mr. Carlson to allow something that's presently not allowable, and to try to do it, and we're trying to do it in a way that guarantees the residents that they're not going to be harmed. And we have a problem of guarantee, making that guarantee, given the...
Because of the state, I understand.
One of the things to keep in mind is, we've only been at this like six weeks. We're trying to answer a major, very major land use decision in a short order of time, and Councilman Creighton raises a good point with regard to meeting with DEC. But the reality is, why haven't all this been done? We are working on this, a major question. And normally, this is the kind of thing that you take a year or two, if you're in state or something like that, before you even resolve. We, we're not going to take that long, but certainly, what we are finding is, and we, as you could see in our memo, we already identified what we felt were the general issues with regard to the processing of these kind of things. But I think now, we have to get into the nuts and bolts, and that's going to take some time, because it is going to, the town attorney now, this, I just found out about this week, about the, about the DEC regulations. So, what we're going to have to do is have the town attorney tell us what his, his needs are with regard to this. Russ and I will then set those up, he will then examine that. We will meet with the applicant and see what we can do, and possibly meet with DEC along this time. What we're saying here is that this is going to take some time to process, given the major issues that are there. We think it's worthwhile to do, but it's not an answer we could give you today.
Okay, well, the answer you have to give, he's the one that's writing to the board and asking...
I'll call him.
Okay.
I, I believe that the reason Mr. Carlson continues to write every so often is his fear of the town going back down there. He puts in a proposal, we sit at the table and say, "It's something that can't work, go violate him again". Then he comes up with another proposal, "It's not going to work", and I think he's, accepts the fact that this may be something we would all be interested in, because we all said that when he first came to the table with it. I don't think he's in a rush, he would, my opinion is, he'd have no problem taking all the time we need on both sides to see if this will actually work. He just wants to protect himself from us going down now, because some resident comes into a board meeting and says that she's being harmed in her driveway, and then we ascend on him. That's, that's the reality of why he just, it's a protection factor for him, that we're in conversations.
And I can understand that, Councilman, but I think one of the other things is, is that we have to also acknowledge that a lot of the activity that's occurring here is occurring on residentially zoned property. And, you know, we can't give a blank check with regard to, you know, continuing the activities that are here. That's a violate, in, from a zoning point of view, it's a violation of our town code. So, there has to be some sort of balance with regard to, you know, with regard to the use of this particular property. You know, what I'm worried about is that, if we don't resolve this fast enough, he'll continue to expand the operation on this, because he already has a new DEC permit, I think that was issued for 50,000 yards here, and that will mean an increase in the activity that's occurring in the east end of this particular property. And that's where we're getting the complaints from the residents, from Schaefer and others on the opposite side.
As well as other properties down there, though.
Yes.
There's 38 out of 41 properties are in violation.
Well, there are, everybody's in violation.
Correct.
I think we basically, there is, we are, stand a better chance of finding who's complying than who is not in violation. But what I'm, with, when we talk about the enforcement areas here, I think we're going to, right now, we stabilize whatever the situation is, but, you know, we have to acknowledge that somehow, what's occurring on this whole portion of the property, right over here, that's residentially zoned. And the question is, is that it should not be permitted within that particular area. We have to acknowledge that. And that's really one, that's the stumbling block, I think, in this particular proposal. I'm not too concerned, his asphalt plant proposal, which is in this area here, we're proceeding on that particular basis, and he's already got his DEC permit, and what, I don't know if you knew that, but he got a DEC acknowledgement on that, and now he has to make an application before the town. That will proceed, it's this area here that becomes the problem.
But I think part of that, he would prefer to go this route, we've indicated we had interest in it, that's all I'm saying.
No, what, I think it's not...
As opposed to putting the asphalt plant in.
I think it's a, what I, the reason I like this proposal is, one, it's a process that I think we always... that I think we always should have done. Secondly, it's a reasonable, practical solution to the problems that we have up in that particular area.
Right.
So, it's a practical approach towards that. So, I'd like to still pursue that, but acknowledge at the same time, we aren't dealing with violations that are on this property that are going to cause the town board some concern.
Assuming that you go forward with this plan for this anaerobic plant, does he stop the violations in the residential zone?
Well, this is all part of our, this is the same issue that we have on the other side of Old Northport Road. If we go in this direction, we need assurances that whatever it's going to do, the property's going to be brought up to compliance, which we agree.
Okay, so you guys are going to notify him that this process is going to take another couple of months before you have full answers?
I'll give him a call today.
Is that right?
Right. This has nothing to do, just one point. Where on this map is Meadow Glen Road? Is it in the center?
Okay, Meadow Glen Road goes right down this line, which is right over here, and comes over here.
All right, all right, that's okay. All right, okay.
Okay, I don't, that's the last general item I have. We have the personnel items that we talked about earlier, do you have any general stuff?
Yeah, I'd like to, we had talked some time ago about the possibility of looking into some property for parking up in Kings Park. The town attorney had contacted the owners of the property and gotten a ballpark price as to what they thought it was. The assessor has looked at the property or has, and said it is in the ballpark, the number that they have is in the ballpark. My question is, do we want to proceed and should we not go to an assessor, an appraiser, to see what the property is worth, and do we go from there? Do we want to do that to begin with?
Well, I, I'll tell you what I think. I think it's wrong to purchase a property for two owners of property, one being a diner and the other where the fellow or six or seven rents coming in. The owners to purchase the property ought to be on those two entities that want to benefit from it. And I, you know, having lived there as you do, it seems to me that the time that they need the parking is always Sunday morning. Most other times, it's ample parking for everybody. So, if you're asking me directly, I would be opposed to spending money for the gain of two entities and not, it doesn't benefit public at large.
Does the town have a threshold as far as if you're going to purchase something, if it's 20,000, you don't need an appraiser, if it's over 20,000, you do, or is there a threshold of any sort?
We always need an appraiser when we buy property.
But you were just asking if you need an appraiser for something like this.
Well, we should, I think we should have an appraiser, yes, but we have to make a decision whether we want to go forward with that or not. If we are going to decide not to build the parking lot or not to have the parking lot there, then you don't want an appraiser, there's no point in doing it. But we do have 600 people that have indicated that they would like to see a town public parking lot there in the form of petitions.
In December, we looked into it, and they're asking 279,000 for complete for a parking lot.
No, just for the property.
No, for the property.
And then who builds the parking lot? The town pays for that as well? Is there a price on that?
No.
It just seems to me, and I'll reiterate it, and then you can move on, that to spend that kind of money to benefit two entities who have their own obligation, if they want to increase the businesses, the patrons going into those businesses, then it's their responsibility to purchase the lot. I don't want to pay for a parking lot for a business, and I don't think I would support the people in the Smithtown or St. James or Hop Dog paying for a parking lot in St., in Kings Park. That's my opinion.
Where is it exactly?
Kings Park, in the end.
In Kings Park, it's, do you know where the bakery is in Kings Park?
Yes.
It's to the rear of the bakery on Pulaski Road.
Okay.
Adjacent to a parking lot that already exists, and between the other piece of property to the west of it would be residents. So, it's, it's two vacant parcels.
We have to make the decision now.
No, no, I'm just trying, I just...
Trying to picture it.
I think, I know what you're talking about, by the bakery, behind the bakery.
Yeah, and I, I think, and we don't have to make the decision now, but I do think it services, or that particular parking lot would service not just the two owners, but a number of businesses that are up there, and, and the people, because we do have a lack of municipal parking in the town, we could use more. It is an expense, but it is something I think we should really consider, so we should...
Well, take it up at the next meeting. Take it up at the next meeting. Okay, we have those personnel problems, what do you want to do first? Mr. Crotto is here for one, I see Mrs. Carnemopos is here for another, Freddie, you're here for another, so whichever one you want to do.
These are executive?
Yes.
Yeah?
All of them, right?
All of them are, yeah.
Obviously, too, okay.
Yeah. Why don't we begin on the one with the drug policy? Why don't we do that, okay? What is this, you gave me this, was what?
Okay.
I move to close the executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to close the general meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.